Hi, everybody. And, hi, everybody. And thank you for being at September's Howard County Council meeting. If you'll all rise and join Councilman Faulkner.
Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Blake?
With our heads. Lord, we just thank you for everyone here this evening. And we thank you for your love. Thank you for all your answers to prayer. We thank you for our families and our friends. And we thank you for the ability to live in this country for their freedom. Um, we pray that you'll be with us tonight as we make decisions. Pray that you will be with this government, with the federal government, with the state government, and even our county government, Lord. And we just pray above all that we do your will and that we behave according to what makes you proud of us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Our first order of business will be to approve the meeting minutes for the council's August 27th meeting. Everybody has read them? Is there any questions or comments about them? If not, I will entertain a motion.
President, I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilman Faulkner and Councilwoman Lake. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Our next order of business will be to deal with the additional appropriations. Madam Auditor?
Ordinance number 2024-HCCO-36, additional appropriations. Whereas it has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the 2024 annual budget, now therefore be it ordained by the County Council of Howard County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. County General Fund, Coroner, Autopsy and Lab, eighty-six thousand five hundred. Total County General, eighty-six thousand five hundred. Local Road and Street Repair Trucks, thirteen thousand nine hundred and one dollars and two cents. Total Lit Special Purpose Fund, total local Road and Street Fund, sorry, thirteen thousand nine hundred and one dollars and two cents. School Lunch Program Equipment Fund, Equipment, three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Total School Lunch Program Equipment Fund, three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Total Appropriations for All Funds, one hundred and four thousand ninety-one dollars and two cents.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Sealy?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Um, I've had this conversation about this particular fund with several of you. And, you know, when, uh, I took office, we always operated hitting the lower amount and then come back at the end of the year just because we knew it was a life target that's always moving on us. So, in talking with, uh, well, actually Darrell and I had a conversation. We were trying to get closer so that there wouldn't have to be so much at towards the end of additional appropriations. However, after we set the budget for 2024 at the end of last year is when I got the notices, which I shared with most of you, um, concerning the rises in lab fees across the United States and as well as with our contracting pathologist that does our autopsies. And, um, there was quite a significant raise in that. I did, uh, check with three other, uh, groups that provide forensic services, two coroners. Um, you know, we have a situation where these people travel to us. There's others that do not travel to us, so it would include travel. Well, we have our own facility, like most places have gotten now. And, uh, we wanted to stay, obviously, with someone come to us because it would take a lot more in personnel and coverage by leaving town. So, with that happening, uh, we have hit right, just a little shy of, uh, 200 cases already this year, unfortunately. And, um, we've already ran negative, almost ten thousand dollars here as of this morning. The figure I gave you yesterday increased by about twenty-two hundred dollars this morning. So, um, at this point, I've estimated that we need about eighty-six thousand five hundred. Uh, hopefully, we won't use all of that, but if we stay course of what I figured we've used over the last eight months, then that's where it's going to fall. Um, so hopefully, I won't see you in November. Um, and then, uh, the following year, we'll, we'll kind of keep track of this again. And so, when the new coroner presents the budget to you for 2026, hopefully, we can maybe adjust it even more, could maybe come a little bit closer. I don't think we will ever hit it just right, but if, you know, it's better to ask for twenty thousand than come and ask him for almost ninety thousand, I understand.
But it's a unique business that you're in. And, uh, it's very hard to predict it.
Yeah.
Predict the, uh, numbers.
Right.
But, uh, we do appreciate all that you do and, and the way you do it.
Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments for Dr. Sealy?
I'll, I'll just say, Dr. Sealy, I appreciate your, uh, your email with kind of how you extrapolated the numbers and just really appreciate you laying that forward, that may be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next presenter will be Amber Toll. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am requesting some additionals for our truck repair budget in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and one dollar and two cents. Um, and this is specifically for a repair for a bucket truck that we have received. Um, the reason I'm asking for this is that, um, with all of the repairs that we have to this moment, um, we are only left with about eleven thousand five hundred in that truck repair budget, so we don't have enough to even cover this large bill. Um, I'm hoping if we get the additionals for this bill specifically, um, then we can use that eleven thousand five hundred to cover the next three months. It's going to be very tight because we average between four and six thousand a month in repairs, um, unless we have something really big come up like this kind of issue. So, uh, we will have to be very diligent and very careful, um, with our budget. But, um, even so, uh, just the, the age of our trucks, the costly amount of tra, uh, parts, uh, and just finding them has been difficult too. So, we'll see how the rest of your place.
Any questions or comments for Amber?
Not on this, but I do want to publicly state, thank you. Uh, I've, twice I've had people from the community say, hey, such and such place they give me an address needs fixed and whatever. And I've talked to her both times. She's on it very quickly and, and, uh, that person wrote me back and said, you guys did a great job, so.
Oh, thank you. Fantastic. Appreciate that.
And thank you for, uh, keeping our roads in good shape. Again, today, man stopped me, a constituent, and, uh, he thinks I'm really good because his road is so nice. And I tell him, it's not me, it's, it's you.
Well, I appreciate that. Our guys work really, really hard, um, to keep the road safe, so we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Our next presenter will be Kathy Colson, Kinsey Center. Kathy, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon. We received a grant, um, to the amount of three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars from the School Nutrition Program through the Department of Education to replace a, um, refrigerator that is no longer working in our kitchen and also to provide us with a milk cooler, um, so that we can store, uh, milk in that instead of in our walk-in, which will then provide us more opportunity to buy in bulk, which saves us a tremendous amount of money. Um, so we're just presenting that because it'll be paid by us first before we're reimbursed.
Okay.
And I do have bids, and I picked the ones I wanted.
Okay.
We have a glass front so that people don't have to open it all the time.
That's a good idea. Any questions or comments, Kathy Colson?
To all the students that are there at your facility, the ones that are in school, do they go to Kokomo Center schools? Do they go to any of the other county schools?
Yes.
Yes, they go to Kokomo only, or yes, they go to other county schools?
No. Kokomo Center does provide us with an educator through Title I. We are only a Title I facility through them, and so our Title I funds pay for our educator there as well as all of our equipment. Um, and I work with them every year to, um, establish how the budget will be spent on our behalf. Um, and so this is something separate. This is the School Nutrition Program, which we are a part of, which was how we receive a significant amount of reimbursement to pay for the food that we do serve the kids for breakfast and for lunch. So, the, our students go wherever they attend and wherever they're enrolled. If they are not enrolled, then they go online through Kokomo Center Schools or Kokomo School Corporation.
So, let's say if a student was from Taylor.
Yes.
And for some reason, they ended up at Kinsey Center.
Mm-hmm.
Their still, their school curriculum might still be through Taylor, or no, it wouldn't be, it'd just be through Kokomo?
Our students in shelter care, would we take them to Taylor every day so that they can attend school and then we pick them up? And then our students that are in security detention would attend school through Taylor online. Everything's online anymore. We don't even have books.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Well, there you have it. Uh, if there's no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move we approve these additional appropriations.
Second. Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilman Faulkner and Councilman Sanders. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes. Next order of business will be to address the transfers.
Resolution number 2024-HCCR-15, transfers. Whereas the County Council may approve the transfer of money from one major budget classification to another within a department or office if the transfer does not require the expenditure of more money than the total set, the total amount set out in the budget is finally determined. And if the transfer is approved at a regular public meeting and by the proper ordinance, be it resolved by the County Council of Howard County, that it's desired and deemed necessary that the following transfers be made within the accounts of the designated funds as set out below. County General, Coroner, Batteries to Equipment Fund, eight hundred and fifty. Travel and Training to Part-Time Payroll, fifteen hundred. Gas, Oil and Lubricants to Part-Time Payroll, fifteen hundred. Garage and Motor Repair to Part-Time Payroll, one thousand. Maintenance, we have a couple corrections. Um, the threes to the threes will not be listed on there. And zero those out. Um, Labor and Maintenance to Tech One, one thousand. Labor and Maintenance to Part-Time, five thousand. Probation Supervisor to Overtime, six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Probation Officer to Overtime, three thousand five hundred. Probation Officer to Equipment, two thousand five hundred. Problems, Problem-Solving Court Coordinator to Unappropriated, thirteen thousand. Lit Public Safety Dispatcher to Overtime Dispatcher, fifty thousand. MVH Restricted, MVH Distribution to Vituminous, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty cents. County User Fee, Project Income, Work Release Facility Manager to Field Officer, thirty thousand. Health Issues and Challenges Led to Contract Services, eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Jessica, could you please go back over the one that you said there?
So, for the maintenance, the utilities to equipment repair, those are both the three series, so they shouldn't have been on this list.
The both of them.
Mm-hmm. So, both the threes to the threes.
Utilities and Utilities Trash Terminator, okay.
Thank you.
Make sure I'm on the same page.
Because.
All right. I'll have probation. Okay. Dr. Sealy?
On the, on the first line item, um, transfer request, it's from Batteries to the Equipment Fund. Uh, and somebody said, we're just not talking about double A and triple A batteries here. These, that fund is used to, usually to replace, uh, the batteries in our portable radios and of that nature. This year, we're good, so we did not need to use those funds. So, I'm asking to transfer that to cover the additional cost of a piece of equipment that we purchased for the Morgan Lab at, at the Coroner's Office. Uh, and it's a system I sent you folks, the, uh, on, you know, picture of the equipment, what it's about, and it's for processing people's pocketbooks and personal belongings and things in a safe environment. Uh, we're running into a lot more, um, novel substances, dangerous substances, that we don't know what they are, and it doesn't take much for those things to become airborne. And so, um, it was, uh, they've come out with this air hood that contains all of that, that we can work with those things inside and under that hood for our safety. And so, I needed about eight hundred and fifty dollars additional to cover that. I also received a, uh, a thousand dollar grant from the Indiana State Department of Health to also help cover that. But with what I had left in Equipment, plus the eight hundred and fifty, and plus the thousand, it covers the expense of that. And I just got, yesterday afternoon, I just got notice of shipment, and I told you that that was, there may be additional shipping cost to that. There is not. We've already got a shipping number, and I've got the final invoice on it.
Excellent.
So, that's what that's for. Uh, the next three are all asking to move these funds to the Part-Time Fund, but I need to mention the Travel and Training. That fund, um, we have traditionally used, I've held back and used as if, when we need to send, uh, people for training in that. We have a, a new, uh, deputy coroner that was hired, who's presently at, been at school last weekend and will be there next weekend. And rather than, when people are in training, we have this, we have it set up in our office that rather than to get their hourly rate, they just get paid a flat one hundred dollars per day, uh, for that. And so, there's going to be, plus their mileage and, and then reimbursement of meals. So, that, but I have to move that over to pay it through the Employee, uh, Part-Time Fund rather than directly out of the other fund. So, that's what fifteen hundred of that is for. I just moved it over. And then the rest is, is to, again, cover, uh, it's just a little bit here and a little bit there that helps to cover for that part-time. So, I've asked to move that over. And that's what the last two line items from Gas, Oil and Lub, and then, uh, we're good on our vehicles at this point. Have not had to have any major repair.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Dr. Sealy? Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bill Stonestreet?
So, you don't want to talk about the utilities transfers?
They don't have to go through.
Okay.
But you can talk about them if you want.
Well, I'm just transferring money. I have a surplus in utilities, which is good. We had a mild winter, and we're doing a lot of, um, expense-saving, um, projects to reduce their usage, and it's working out. And I actually got a check from, uh, Duke Energy today for six hundred dollars for a rebate for some LED lighting we're, we're installing. And I think that was the third check I've got so far within the last two months. So, we're doing real well there. Well, yeah, anyway, I'm transferring money from our utilities to our Equipment Repair Supplies Account, so I can, uh, have a little more flexibility there. Or my accounts are healthy. I just want to make sure I have enough money to get to the end of the year. I don't expect to use this much. I just want to make sure I have enough. Uh, the other is Labor Maintenance. I have a little bit of surplus there, so I'm transferring a thousand to Tech One. That's for, due to some employee shuffling that we've done this year and promotions. And then we have a Part-Time Tech One that's working for us at the jail, and, uh, that's working out very well. And, uh, in order to make sure we have enough money in that account, because we pay them from the Part-Time Account instead of the Tech One Account, in order, in order to make sure I have enough money in that account, I'm transferring five thousand dollars to Part-Time. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for, uh, Bill?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Next presenter will be, uh, Amber, Amber Toll. Nope, excuse me. Probation, Dustin?
I'm okay. I'm good. What's your name?
Welcome.
All right. I have a few transfer requests, uh, in front of you. So, I would want to go ahead and explain the, the first couple of transfers from one line item to the overtime line item in our County General Fund. Um, it's unusual for us to have an overtime line item in the County General, but this year, we, we had done some reorganizing with the help of the judges and our leadership team. And one of the projects that was decided, uh, to be tackled and tackled with our department was review and revision of policies and procedures. We have eight to ten policy and procedure manuals. They're cumbersome, they're long. The idea was that we would have our current employees review, evaluate our policies and procedures in an overtime status, and they would be paid for that overtime. Typically, we have not done overtime paid through, uh, for probation officers. We've only offered earned comp time because we haven't had the funds to offer that. Um, with some of our shuffling and our reorganization, we found some money to make that happen. So, that's what that request is. It's, it's for the overtime line item so that we can pay our staff overtime funds to evaluate, review, and make revisions to our current policy and procedures.
Is this the same line that Judge Elkins came in and wanted for this probation officer to, to weekend work?
No, that's something completely different. That is a grant fund that is out of the Problem-Solving Court. Um, this has nothing to do with that. That's two completely separate things. Um, this is for the Community Supervision Department. That was a reentry specific grant, if I under, if I remember that correctly. And that is outside of what I do in our department. While we, we facilitate that program with our staff, or our staff do work through that program, that is outside of what we normally would do within our organization. Does that make sense?
Certainly.
It's kind of weird, but that's just the way that it is at this point, so, okay? Um, the, the next one is, um, I've requested twenty-five hundred dollars to be moved into the Equipment Line Item. Um, this is specifically for the kitchen and/or break room in the basement of the courthouse. Our refrigerator is looking at twenty-some years old, is rusted all over the front, um, is quite terrible, along with our microwave, and we have no place for staff to really sit and enjoy lunch. It's pretty rough. So, we intend to use these funds to purchase a refrigerator, a microwave, and maybe a seating area if we have the additional funds left over in our basement and kitchen area. Um, the next one is our thirteen thousand from Coordinator to Unappropriated. Again, this one's a little bit odd. We have a, a grant that is a reimbursable grant. We did not receive reimbursement for one of our quarters due to, I don't know, the error, the issue is lengthy. The long, the short story is, we requested reimbursement for an extended period of grant time. That reimbursement was denied. It was already after the end of the fiscal year, though, so it didn't, it was not something that we could recapture or fix. I am working to get that, um, that account back in order. So, the thirteen thousand dollars in unappropriated will be paid through a claim into an existing fund to try to make that a zeroed-out account. Uh, we don't want to have a continued negative count, trying to get it back to where it's flush and zeroed out. So, our reimbursements will match, and we will zero out on a quarterly basis. That is the goal. That's, this is one step of it. I'm still in the process of evaluating a bunch of other things with this fund, but this is a start in the right direction to get that rectified. Um, the twenty-five forty-two, thirty thousand dollar, um, transfer, I was here earlier this year asking for an additional appropriation of thirty thousand dollars into our Field Officer Line Item. When I prepared that paperwork, I copied and pasted Facility Manager, so the title was wrong on my paperwork. I had the right account number, but I need to move that money from the Facility Manager to the Field Officer. It was never intended to be the Facility Manager. This is when we hired an additional Field Officer due to, um, grant funds not being able to be used for what we had thought they were going to be able to be used for. Any, any questions? That's all that I have at this point.
No, but what, not, not on your transfers, but watching your meetings, I've been watching the, how you say, overtime for, for your people on probation, you're, you're writing new rules and going over those. That's really interesting.
Yeah.
Really interesting.
We're trying to set up a, a structure to better support what we're, what we do. So, this, this is something outside of what that was. That was intended for twenty-four hour management and/or retrieving of bracelets or dealing with issues seven days a week, all hours of the day and night, um, which we do on a limited basis right now, but we haven't had the funds and/or the structure set up to where that is something we can do regularly. So, we're trying to build it right now. Jeremy and Megan are doing a great job with that part of it, so.
It looks good.
Yeah, it, it'll be beneficial to our employees, and it'll be a better product for the community, and that's our goal, so.
This may be a little bit from left field, but, uh, when you started to talk about reviewing policies and procedures, I went back to when I was on the school board, and, uh, we always reviewed policies and procedures, but we had, I think, a contracted company that kind of made sure that all policies and procedures were in line with the most recent legislative action. So, it was kind of like, are your policies and procedures up to date with the current legislative actions and laws? First off, I don't know if there's a standard set of policy and procedures for each county probation department around the state. Kind of curious about that. And secondly, are there companies that do kind of a generalized review of policies and procedures for probation departments that align them with current laws that would be useful at all? And I'm not suggesting that any of your review is deficient or anything else. I'm just saying, hey, I remember how we used to do that Western, and it seemed like it was an efficient way to do it.
Yeah. It would make sense that that would be something, I'm sure you can pay somebody to do that. I'm not aware of any companies that do that for probation departments across the state. So, uh, the probation department is technically part of the judiciary. So, we work for the judges, and we were mandated by the state, and we have all these different judicial rules and requirements that fall on us, that don't fall on general employees of the county. It is recommended, I believe, across the state that each probation department has their own personnel policy and procedure manuals. We, we have program-specific policies and procedures, and then we do have a general policy and procedure manual. Um, it supplements the county's policy and procedure manual for, largely, we utilize the county's policy and procedure manual for our base policies and procedures. But then we have all of these different programs that are based on statute and are required to have all these different words and language in them. And most of our programs are reviewed every three years by the state, and the state comes in and reviews our policies and procedures and says, hey, you need to make all of these updates to the words in this policy and procedure manual. But what I find is, that's a not very effective way of getting your employees or your staff to buy into your policies and procedures and actually understand what's written. It's great that you hand them fifteen hundred pages of written documentation that they should know. They don't, but if they review it and they're giving proposed, um, feedback and/or making suggestions, those policies become part of what they do. I, I think, I think it becomes more of a, um, ownership of departmental policies. So, that's why we're doing it, the way that we're doing it is to give ownership to the staff and the employees so that they own the policies, feel as though they have their say and they have, have been heard. We'll make sure that any changes don't fall outside of what we have to statutorily, and if we can't make changes that they recommend based on that, we'll definitely communicate that, like, here's the reason why, and spell it out, and send them the code to dictate. Like, here's the reason why, and spell it out, and send them the code that dictates what has to happen. So we're trying to engage employees in this process intentionally.
You have anybody in your group that likes doing that stuff?
They all like money. So if we offer overtime, they do enjoy working on policies and procedures. So, so, yes, there, there are people who are weird and enjoy that sort of thing. I, I do a little, just a little, but then I can get stuck in it for days and weeks on end.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Nice presentation.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Next presenter will be Sheriff Asher. We can go, um, we can go with Amber Toll. That'll be fine, too. Just going down the list here.
Let's Public Safety. Don't matter, she's there.
Okay.
Amber, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, mine is fairly simple. Um, this is a grant that we were awarded earlier this year. This is the Community Crossings Matching Fund Grant. This is the first two projects that we were awarded. Um, this is our resurface project, and the grant is in the amount of nine hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty cents. We have received those funds, we just need to transfer those into the appropriate line item so that we can spend those accordingly, um, which is our Vituminous Line. That's all I have.
Any questions for Amber?
So I have one.
Sure.
So approximately, how long is the timeframe between the time that you apply for a grant and the time, in this case?
Mm-hmm.
Get the money.
Yeah.
Is that a year or six months?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's yearly. Um, there's actually two calls for Community Crossings. The first one is in January, and that's the one that we always apply for. Um, it, there's no rule, but it typically, it seems like counties get more funding in the first call, um, and cities get more funding in the second call. I'm not sure why that is, but it just kind of seems like that. Um, so the first call is in January, so we apply. Um, I think it's very, at the end of January is when our applications are due. Um, it's usually a couple months before that we're, um, actually told if we get the grant or not. And then as soon as we get the grant, we can hit the ground running. Um, because our, our plans are ready and everything is ready to go. And so we usually, um, only apply for resurfacing money, so we, that's how we do our resurfacing throughout most of the county. This year, we, we applied for two different projects. So the majority of what we asked for was resurfacing, and then we applied for a second project, which is County Road twelve fifty, uh, West. Um, we have an issue with an embankment on that roadway, and so we have to kind of do a, a full-depth re, re, redo on that one. Um, so this year, we tried something different, we applied for two separate projects. So this is the first of those two projects. So, yeah, so this one is a pretty quick-hitting, uh, grant, uh, the Community Crossings, which is why it's so appealing, um, to communities like us. We can apply for those funds, we get the money, and we can spend it that year. Um, so it, it's a pretty quick-hitting, um, grant. They're not always like that.
In January and get the funds in September.
Uh, well, we actually got them midsummer, um, we're just appropriating it into the right, right fund. Uh, it, it depends on how quick end that is sometimes, uh, when you actually get those funds. But we can start, because we have to pay half of that project, and the grant is for the other half of the project. So we go ahead and start as, as quick as we can, because we want to get our surface in over the summer when the weather's right and, and all that. So we go ahead and start, and then we're given the funds through all the paperwork and all that stuff, so, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Are they going to change any of the restrictions this year, do you think, or are you going to still? I know the legislature every year looks.
We've heard, uh, you mean for MVH Restricted?
Yes.
Um, we, I've heard yes and no, um, so I haven't heard anything solid. Um, I'm hoping that they take down that fifty percent, um, but, uh, I haven't heard anything, um.
I hadn't either, but I just thought maybe, maybe you had.
I know there's a lot of people lobbying for it, um, just to make it a lot easier for us to spend, um, and still spend appropriately, but, uh, just a little bit easier on us.
Yeah, same aspiration, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly, so, yep.
Thank you, Amber.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next presenter will be James Best. Welcome.
Hello, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, um, just looking to transfer funds into, um, Contract Services and the Health Issues and Challenges Grant. We had, these are, these are funds that we received from the state reimbursing us for, uh, performing, uh, case management and, um, environmental assessments on homes that have kids with high blood lead levels. So this, that's all it is.
So you're checking for lead in this case?
Yeah, yeah, so if we had kids with high blood lead levels, we performed the Case Management Service in this grant. We got reimbursed for the, for a certain amount, each child that case management was done, or each home that we did, uh, environmental uh, risk assessment, lead risk assessment.
How's that work? Can you expand on that? Does every child in the county get tested one time or another, or?
Well, yeah, they should be tested, and if they happen to have a high blood lead, we, we, um, you know, we're told that, and sometimes they'll need to have an, an additional test, you know, be more specific, make sure that it's, it is a high blood lead, and then we'll work with them, do management with the, with the family, and make sure, you know, try to figure out where the lead's coming from. If it's something in the diet, or a toy, or something, if it's in the home, uh, we, we can do, uh, we've got a couple lead risk assessors and inspectors on our staff that are licensed to do that work. So try to get to the bottom of where the lead's coming from.
How, how do we test all the, are they tested through the schools, or how do you get to all these kids?
Just through their doctors, or we, we can actually do testing as well at our office, we have a lead testing machine, so.
Do you get reports from their doctors?
Yes.
Any questions, comments for James? Thanks for coming in, James.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you. Sheriff Asher.
Take the best for last, I appreciate that. At least my, my list from the emails had me last, so didn't want to cut them off. Uh, it looks like we need to transfer fifty thousand dollars from, um, Dispatch to Dispatch Overtime, we're still a couple of dispatchers short. We're getting ready to lose one for maternity leave, but I think we have a couple in the wings that we're getting ready to bring on, so hopefully we'll get back to full staff. But we need a little help. Uh, hopefully this will last us through the end of the year. We'll see, but we need fifty thousand dollars from CO line item to overtime.
Any questions or comments for Sheriff Asher? Sheriff, thank you.
Only question, uh, only other question I had, and I don't know that anybody's going to ask, but budget. We, after, after talking to a couple, um, other department heads, we were kind of hoping to see maybe when is the, when are we going to be able to, to check that out? Or, I know you guys are still, I, I talked to Jessica today, or at least texted her, and I know they're still working on it, so I didn't know if there was a timeline to to get something like that.
Got a October twelfth, is that what it is, twelfth?
The tenth?
Good, beginning on October tenth to, to approve it.
Yeah.
Officially. And so between now and then, I think we still have a few things to, to check and make sure everything's accurate. And accuracy is the most important thing here, because
Absolutely.
we have the right idea, got the right, got the right, uh, concept, and, uh, just got to make sure that we don't um, do anything that's not completely and totally accurate.
Sounds good, just, just trying to look for some direction here. It's, this is a different year than, than most, so it's a little different, but thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions or comments about the transfers? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the transfers as presented.
Motion's been properly made by, and seconded by Councilman Alexander and Councilwoman Lake. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you very much. Next order of business will be Salary Ordinance Amendments.
Ordinance number twenty-two-four dash HCCO dash thirty-seven, Salary Ordinance Amendment. An ordinance amending and increasing staffing and salary authorization to be paid county employees for the calendar year effective January one, twenty-two-four through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, as originally approved for the year twenty-twenty-four, except where otherwise noted. Be it ordained by the Council of Howard County, Indiana, that for the said fiscal year, the following salary amendments are approved as additional changes to the basic salary ordinance for the same fiscal year. Necessary Personal Services appropriations have been approved previously to support the required expenditure of necessary funds. County General Fund. Maintenance. Labor and Maintenance Reduction, one thousand. Tech One, one thousand. Labor Maintenance. Reduction, five thousand. Part-Time, five thousand. Probation Supervisor Reduction, six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Overtime, six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Probation Officer Reduction, three thousand five hundred. Overtime, three thousand five hundred. Probation Officer Reduction, two thousand five hundred. That wouldn't be on there, sorry. Um, Problem Solving Coordinator Reduction, thirteen thousand. Wouldn't be on there either. County User Fee, Project Income, Work Release Facility Manager Reduction, thirty thousand. Field Officer, thirty thousand.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions or comments about the Salary Ordinance Amendments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve Ordinance Number, uh, twenty-two-four HCCO thirty-seven, Salary Ordinance Amendment for September.
Go here a second.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilwoman Lake and Councilwoman Cuthbert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you. Next order of business will be old businesses, are there any old business we need to tend to? Is there any new business we need to tend to? Is there any other council business we need to tend to? Any public comments? Not being so, I will entertain a motion for a German. Move.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded by Councilman Faulkner and Councilman Alexander, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.